Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Star Flag Committee meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Some would say we rushed through this so we could watch the Red Sox. I might say we rushed through it so the water that you're drinking won't freeze. So before we start, two things I want to address. One, somebody left some sunglasses at the table. Anybody missing sunglasses? If not, we'll auction them later and our tax rate will go down. Sunglasses are here. If you realize that you don't have your sunglasses, just let me know. And at this point, I really would like to take a moment for silence for the passing of George Benway, who was a town select person and also a town moderator for a decade who preceded me. And so if we could just take a moment, please. Thank you. All right. No other announcements. I'm going to start with Article 1. And right off the bat, I know there's a motion to amend, so I'll look to Mr. O'Hara for that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome, everybody.
Before I do that, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to waive the reading in Article 1?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 1, motion to amend. Move that I move that the town vote to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant, subject to the addition of a clause to the purpose...
Proposed.
Proposed, I'm sorry. Charter amendment legislation requiring approval of the amendment by the voters of the town at the annual special election prior to the amendment, becoming effective in that the exception of the phrase or taking any other action related thereto.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I understand that the Finance Committee makes no recommendation on this. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Discussion on Article 1 as moved, amended move. And for those who want to know, you want to speak, just raise your hand, stand up, and there'll be a microphone brought to you. Mr. Larkin, saying that, where's the microphone?
I think I have it.
Come see, Mr. Larkin.
He's behind the flag.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He's right over here.
Over here.
I have a microphone.
Yeah, come to the flag.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that amendment. The reason that amendment is being made is that this document, the charter, was initiated by the citizens of the town of Mashpee, not the legislature. We're the ones that initiated it, voted on it, and now it's going to be, we're asking for an amendment by the legislature. It doesn't seem fair to me that the legislature should have the final say on what happens to your document, the charter, the constitutional charter. Seems to me as though it's only fair that the final vote should be the voters of Mashpee, who initiated the whole document. They should have the final say, not the legislature. Thank you.
Okay. By way of explanation, do we have any other discussion?
No, please.
I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave and Michael Smith, 2 Maple Street, Mashpee. I have two questions. One is for FinCom, and that question is, how much will this cost to implement to the town? And the second question is to the Selectmen, if I can still use that term.
So far.
Why are we doing this? Since we've had this in our paperwork since the town was incorporated, why are we all of a sudden changing it to Select Board?
Okay. And I apologize, sir. I thought you were handing them out to people. Finance Committee, you want to take step number one, and then I'll turn to...
So the Finance Committee does not know what the financial impact will be.
Okay. We'll take that one.
Sure. So this came up, a number of boards across the Cape have made this change. And frankly, it's just to recognize the fact that when the term Selectman was adopted, women didn't couldn't vote. Women couldn't hold office. So it seems like we're trying to maybe catch up a little bit late with the times, and it seemed to have a more neutral term reflected the realities of the world we live in a little bit better. And frankly, if it makes some people feel better and encourage some to participate and find that the town government is a welcoming place for them, it doesn't cost me anything, and it doesn't really frankly cost anybody anything to do that. And so that's why the boards voted to support this article.
All right. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Coming up on your right, or left.
Could you, I want Chuck Gassio, 186 Dun Robin Road. Could you just please explain the amendment that you are suggesting with this article?
Ed, you want to take that?
Yes, Chuck. We're asking that once the legislature enacts a special act changing the name, that it only takes effect after ratification on a ballot by you, the voters of Mashpee, which is only the fair way of doing it.
Yes, sir.
John Miller, Shell Back Way. The question is, are we voting on the amendment to the article as printed? Or are we voting on the article with that amendment as amended?
You're voting on the article as amended.
So if we vote with the amendment, and this does go before the voters of subsequent elections?
I believe that's yes.
Correct. Which is your intent?
Yes.
If we decline the amendment, and if we decline the article and then entertain it again through reconsideration or some method like that without that amendment, then it could be voted on by the forum here tonight without having to go through an election process.
Yep. I'll count.
Good evening. I would suggest if this amended motion fails, a substitute main motion will be made as printed in the warrant, which will not require the ratification vote by the town meeting. So we will ask for another motion to be offered by the Board of Selectmen as printed in the warrant without the ratification language therein.
So the bottom line is, if we're eager to change the name to Select Board sooner than later, the voters would decline and vote down the amendment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. So the intent of this change was to bring more people into making this decision. At a town meeting, you normally have 150 to 200 individuals. If you put it on the ballot, you'll get the majority of the people to voice their opinion. And that was what was important. And when Mr. Larkin explained to me, when they wrote the charter, they wrote it that way specifically so that the majority of the voters would vote, not at a town meeting, but a vote, and exercise their right to participate in town government. And that's what was important to me, to participate in town government. The result is going to be the same, but it's more important to have people voice their opinion and be heard by their government. And that's why I voted to change the amendment.
Yes, sir.
Dan Cuffman, Tracy Lane. I don't understand why we would want to do this for this article, but not for every article. We have articles in town meeting all the time. We make the decisions because we came here to the meeting.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. You're voting on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. All right. And count. I'll give you updates on the Red Sox poll. I'm kidding. We'll take all the time we need. All right. You have cards. All those in favor of the amended motion, raise your cards, please. Okay. All those opposed, raise your cards, please.
I move the town vote to approve Article 1 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So that means we're going to make the decision tonight. Any further discussion on Article 1? Seeing none. Oh, sorry.
Hi, Mary Ann Murphy, 53, Tracy Lane. So in terms of why we need this, gentlemen, fellas, guys, and that includes you women too, right? No, no, clearly it doesn't. Language matters. Words matter. And every woman in this room knows what it has felt like when you hear about firemen, policemen, congressmen, and select men. It doesn't include us, even though obviously, clearly it does. Now, the chair of our board is a woman. Of our board of select men is a woman. So this is an archaic holdover, this term Selectmen. It's been changed all over the Cape, all over the Commonwealth, all over the country. And it's time for us to change it as well. It really makes sense for us, for our children, for every citizen of Mashpee who isn't a man, to know that we're invited to, to participate in government and to be represented appropriately in government. Please vote in favor of question one.
I have no problem because I'm moderator. No article change in that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I speak tonight as a member of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. We voted unanimously in favor of changing the name to Select Board because the term Selectmen is exclusionary. Equality matters. We need to set a good example for tomorrow's leaders, and they need to know that everyone is not only welcome, but encouraged to serve in local government regardless of gender and regardless of the printing costs to fix this. Words matter. The Massachusetts Selectmen's Association changed its name to the Select Board Association, quote, "to reflect a movement among towns to adopt a gender neutral name for their elected policy board." More than 100 towns throughout the state have already made this change, and Mashpee won't be the first town on the Cape to do this. Nine towns have already done so: Brewster, Chatham, Dennis, Eastham, Falmouth, Orleans, Provincetown, Truro, and Welfley. Bourn just voted yes in August, so they'll be number 10. Barnstable has town councils, so that leaves four towns that are still using the antiquated term Selectmen. Let's not be the last. Change the name to Select Board. Thank you.
I don't think I'll call on you again. Kidding. All right. All those in favor of Article 1 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Okay. Article 2. See if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, Chapter 40, Sections 15 and 15A, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer title, care, management, custody, and/or control of the real property identified as 108 Commercial Street, Mashpee, Successus, Map 81, Parcel 130 to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for purposes of developing affordable housing, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, or other instruments necessary to effect said transfer upon such terms and conditions as the Selectmen shall deem to be in the interest of the town or take Select Board, shall deem to be in the interest of the town or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Weeden.
Mr. Moderator, I move to the town vote to approve Article 2 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 2 by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Discussion on Article 2. Going to look to the left, to the right. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 3. See if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws in accordance with the provisions of the Mashpee Home Rule Charter, Section 5-1B, by adopting the following bylaws, Division 1, Part 1, Chapter 1, Article 5, Sections 1 through 9. Reorganization of Town Government, Department of Wastewater Management, together with the plan of reorganization submitted herewith, which shall be appended to the town bylaws in the form of an administrative code, and further to amend the provisions of the town bylaws, Chapter 5, Article 6, Section 5-30, by adding subsection R as follows. R. The town manager shall appoint a town engineer or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gotlieb.
Big surprise, I got this one. I move the town vote to approve Article 3 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 3 by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Any discussion on Article 3? Somebody's... I think she's waving at someone. Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $10,600 from revenue available for appropriation, which said funds distributed as follows: $9,180 to the Sewer Commission, full-time salaries account; $1,265 to the sick leave incentive account; and $155 to the Medicare expense account, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 4 by a vote of six to zero.
Does anybody find it strange that it's a sick leave incentive account? I don't know. Any discussion on Article 4? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 5. I've been told we have 215 voting members in the House. Article 5. I take a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. O'Hara.
I move to the town vote to approve Article 5 as printed in warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any action, any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 5 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 5? Yes, ma'am.
This is a zoning bylaw change, correct, Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
Does the Planning Board need to give you a report on that?
The Planning Board does. Does anybody hear from the Planning Board? Ah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Flon, Chair of the Planning Board. After holding a public hearing on October 6, 2021, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approve Article 5.
Okay. Select Board is approved. Finance Committee is approved. Planning Board is approved. Discussions on Article 5? Yes, sir.
On page 28, there's a table of contents, a table of organization for the municipal and I'm wondering where this wastewater department is going to fit in that table of organization.
The engineer.
I'm sorry?
It's the engineer.
The engineer.
So the department will come, the engineer will be department and then the engineer under?
Wastewater Department, and then the engineer will be the department head.
The engineer that's appointed by the town manager will become the department head of wastewater. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. I need a two-thirds vote on Article 5. All those in favor of Article 5 say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to rescind the authority to issue the following unissued balances of authorized bonds or notes pursuant to the votes adopted under the following articles to the extent not previously exercised or take any other action related thereto. The May 1, 2001 town meeting, Article 17, $275,000 from Mashpee Riverdridge. May 5, 2008, Article 16, $50,000 solar power senior center. May 1, 2017, Article 15, $1,141,318.35 Washington School Building. And May 1, 2017, Article 36, $600,830, Chapter 90, 2019. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 6 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 6 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 6. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 7. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $50,000 from the principal temporary borrow outside 2 1/2 account to the principal temporary borrowing inside 2 1/2 account, and vote to transfer $2,720 from interest to borrow inside 2 1/2 to the interest to borrow outside 2 1/2 or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Weeden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 7 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 7 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 7? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 8. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,795.50 from the revenue available for appropriation to pay the previous fiscal years unpaid bills as follows. Visiting Nurse Association of Cape Cod, $2,256.25. Northeast Resource Recovery Association, $539.25, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gotlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
I'll second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 8 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing none. I need a four-fifths vote on this. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Clear and unanimous. Article 9. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $1 million from revenue available for appropriation to the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund, CARES Act CV RF, to cover expenses incurred during the COVID-19 pandemic, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 9 by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article 9? Seeing none. All those favor Article 9 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 10. See if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer the sum of $9,625 from revenue available for appropriation to the Sewer Commission Professional and Technology Account for aerial photography of the entire town, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to the town vote to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 10 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 10? Yes, sir. We'll get a microphone to you in a minute.
Mark Baracko, 76 Wheeler Road. I'm just curious, what overbed photographs are... Is this going to provide its different from what the GIS overlay the town of Mashpee already provides?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gotlieb.
The intent behind this is to enable us to get photographs that will show the elevations in topography in sufficient detail that we'll be able to design sewer system installation without significant further on-the-ground engineering and taking of heights. So it lets us go ahead and figure out where the high points, where the low points are in order to be able to lay sewer pipes.
That was a better question than I had. I thought Google Maps would work. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jill Allen, Kitchell Road. I'm a few years back, didn't the town do aerial photography for the Police and Fire Department for their 911 system? Why can't they use the same system? Or the same setup of pitches?
Because it wasn't, Mr. Moderator, if I might. If it wasn't, it was done for a different purpose, and it doesn't have a level of definition and the marks sufficient to allow you to determine heights and topography. You know, the reasons the police and fire would need certain photographs and the reason you'd need it to design sewers are different.
Any further discussion on Article 10? Okay. All those in favor of Article 10 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 11. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 6, to reserve from the fiscal year 2022 estimated community preservation revenues to the following amounts: $198,834, 10% for open space and recreational purposes; $198,834, 10% for historic... $198,834, 10% for historic preservation purposes. $198,834, 10% for affordable housing purposes. $1,351,834 to the fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserved as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article XI as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article XI by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article XI? Yes, sir.
Brian Everett, Forest Drive, Mashpee. Can I just get clarification on how much money is exactly in that budget right now? The $2 million?
The finance director should be able to give a balance.
Good evening. The current balance of undesignated funds at this point is $6,522,000. That is not to be spent on anything. That does not include the reserves. That's just the undesignated.
Just the CPA.
Correct. Only the CPA.
Copy. Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have a 50-50 raffle or not? All right. Seeing no further discussion on Article XI, all those in favor of Article XI as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 12.
Neck area at that dock and that ramp which, I'm not sure, any future plans for that? Be interesting hearing that because seems like a lot of money is being spent on one side of town and not the other. Maybe that's coincidence, maybe I'm misinformed, but again, totally for this article, but want to know, when are you going to do something at Mashpee Net? If you've ever been there, and I believe Selectman Gottlieb is a voter, in spend of that ramp, you have to launch your boat, walk or ride, take a bike, half a mile, three-quarters of a mile, even park. Now, there was some improvements put there where there was a new float bound. It's inadequate, it's too small. If you've ever been there on a weekend and boats come in, two boats take up that entire ramp and it causes a backup. It's been a problem for years. I went to this board select meeting a number of years ago. Not much has happened, but I see a lot of money being spent on the other side of town. So I'd like to see something else happen for everyone in Mashpee, not certain areas. Thank you.
Mr. Gottlieb can respond.
What I'll say is that, you know, we've been, I think, steadily investing in our waterways access over a number of years using the CPA as a primary funding vehicle to do it. You know, we've replaced and improved most of the pads. This is one of the last ones in the salt environment that needs it. And there are certain locations, and you're right, I use that one a fair bit, where we don't have the space. We've done the improvements, we've done stormwater improvements, we put in some green infrastructure to capture stormwater, we did improve the dock, but we don't simply have the physical town-owned space to create a parking lot down there and you, like I and everybody else who ends up using it, needs to hoof it after we get our boat in and out of there. And there isn't, all the money in the world isn't going to solve the fact that we don't have any publicly-owned property adjacent there. The one place where people did, used to park along the side, we needed to take in order to do a stormwater improvement so that we weren't having raw road runoff going directly into the bay and contaminating those shellfish. And we, town made a determination, that was the higher use of that public property rather than have a couple of trailers be able to pull up on the side of the road. So we're doing the best we can, we're, we've got a pretty aggressive program. I don't think we've just spent money on one side of the town or another. We've been making improvements as best we can across the range of waterway access.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article 12? Yes, sir.
Brian Everett, Forest Drive. I was going to wait till the Wakeby vote to speak about this, but again, I live on Santua Pond. We've been, haven't been able to swim in our pond for 11 years. I disagree with the previous speaker saying that it's going to benefit everyone in the town. It's going to benefit the voters if this gets passed. I'd rather see that this money goes to the CPA funds get spent on, you know, relieving these water quality issues that we're having, like in Wakeby. A lot of people are here for Wakeby, like in Santua Pond. You know, we've been dealing with this for 11 years, we haven't been able to swim in the pond. So to say that fixing a boat ramp in Aquay Bay is going to benefit everyone, I think that's not very accurate.
Any further discussion on Article 12? Yes, sir.
Dick Warner, 13 Seaspray. It seems like we've got an awful lot of boating articles coming up. Article 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, they all kind of add up to numbers for close to a million dollars in the boating business here. It seems like an awful lot in one year.
All right, seeing no other discussions. All those in favor of Article 12 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article 13, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $50,000 from revenue available for appropriation to fund consulting services for a Mashpee municipal harbor management plan or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 13 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 13? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article 14, see if the town will vote to prohibit overnight occupancy on town-issued moorings within Mashpee estuarant systems by adding the following provision to the Mashpee Use of Waterways General Bylaws, specifically Chapter 170-9A or take any other action related thereto. A4, overnight occupancy by vessels and boats of town permitted moorings within mooring fields located within Mashpee estuarant systems is prohibited. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 14 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 14? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 14 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 15, see if the town will vote to amend the use of Waterways General Bylaws, Chapter 170, specifically speeds, Chapter 170-4.8.4, to read, "A maximum speed for watercraft is quote 'slow, no wake,' end of quote, at wave speed." Four, on the following bodies of tidal water. Great River, Little River, Santuert River, Mashpee River, Aquay Bay, Shoestring Bay, and Simon's Narrow, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 15 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 15? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 15 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 16, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $350,000 from revenue available for appropriation to fund a diagnostic study at Mashpee-Wakeby Pond or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
I move the town to vote and approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant, which the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 16 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 16? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 16 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $19,050 from revenue available for appropriation to the Natural Resource Waterways expense account or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Whedon.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 17 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 17? Yes, sir.
Brian Everett, Forest Drive. Grants are great. I definitely applaud the Natural Resources Department for applying for this grant, but what is $20,000 going to do to clean up the pond?
Mr. Gottlieb, you want to take that one?
This is part of an overall plan that the town's put forward to finally address something that's been long overdue in this pond and others, but this would allow some of the stormwater issues to be addressed and remediated at the same time that we have accelerated our plan to do the sewer-ing program around the ponds, which will provide the nutrient reduction that we need to really achieve the water quality goal. So this is part of the puzzle, it's not the whole thing, but we'll be coming back to town meeting in the spring, looking for design money for sewer, initial design funding for sewer-ing around Santuert, Mashpee-Wakeby, Johns, and Asshmut Ponds.
Pretty sure the stormwater was already cleared up back in 2010.
I disagree with you. I think there's plenty left to do and has been.
I'm hoping to see it.
Well, anyway, at some point you realize that we're actually starting to work on these issues and be part of the solution with us.
All right. Any further comments? Yes, sir. You're going to get a microphone right before you.
Basically, everything's not a quick fix around here. You don't just dump money and figure it's going to be fixed tomorrow. The grounds are polluted, okay? They're going to be polluted for a while, okay? I live next by Otis. Our well water is polluted thanks to Otis, okay? Certain areas are, in Yarmouth, are polluted due to the shelling of practicing firing from the lead going into the ground, okay? We need to wake up. We've got a slow process, okay? Let's not get, ee, 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 it's not getting fixed. We're not going to wake up tomorrow and have our drink for spring, drinking water around here, people. I've lived in Mashpee 30 years, okay? I've seen it all. I've seen it grow. I would love to have a fast food place, but we don't, okay? I really do. You know, Wendy's, McDonald's, I'm not, but we don't. I, I, you know, that's fine. Thank you, town, okay? And we really don't need one. I don't need one, okay? But basically, that's it. We need to wake up and stop screaming and saying, "It's not fixed yet, it's not fixed yet." $20,000 is a lot of money. We need more, but are you going to put in it? What are you going to come up with? Okay, think about that. Let's all today come up with $1 and give the town, $1 toward the town, okay? There's what, maybe 100 people here? 200 people here? That's $200. But no, but if we pay, if we paid an extra dollar for something, they could do something with that dollar. Think about that. Right? Thank you. I thank that, too.
Bless him. God bless him.
All right. Are we voting for Wendy's or are we voting for? All those in favor of Article 17 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 18, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $9,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the election/registration expense account to purchase six election pole pads and six election pole, election pole pad printers or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 18 by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article 18? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That unanimous. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Select Persons, people, to prepare a plan laying out defining Kennachuk Avenue and to accomplish said purpose and for the expenses related thereto, town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the Kennachuk Avenue Roadways account or take any other action related thereto. This is a petition order. We have a petition, the petitioner here.
Yes.
Uh, hold on, yeah, there's a microphone right there.
I move the town to vote to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 19 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 19? Kennachuk?
Kennachuk.
Kennachuk. When you come back next year, I'll have it right. Seeing no discussion, all those relate, all those in favor of Article 19 as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 20, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a petition article. Yes, sir. Hold on for the microphone.
Dave Blomfield, 13 Cedar Street, Mashpee. I move that the town vote to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 20 by a vote of six to zero.
Could have read these streets, I think I know this. Discussion on Article 20? Okay, because we're borrowing, I need two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 20, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 21, take a motion to dispense with the reading of Article 21.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a petition order. Well, I'll do it, I guess. I make the motion to move the town vote to approve Article 21 as printed in a warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 21 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 21? Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote on Article 21 because it's a borrowing article. Hold on, just get a microphone to you. I need your name and street.
Catherine Laurent, I'm the DPW Director.
Okay.
So this is a petition article that is obligating, potentially obligating, the residents of the road to a significant cost. My recommendation is perhaps to indefinitely postpone if the petitioner is not here rather than moving forward just because of the cost that, that would be assessed to them through a betterment.
Okay, so if you want to do it that way, I would deny the motion, I mean, deny the article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
I'd also like to point out that the Planning Board has never released
I'd also like to point out that the planning board has never released the road covenant on that road for the specific reason that there is a very steep embankment involved, which is where this massive cost is going to come from. So I don't see why the town would take a road where the planning board has not even released the covenants. There were houses built there illegally in violation of the road covenant, but it's never been approved by the planning board, the construction itself.
That was Tom Fidal, the retired town president. All right, so does anybody want to do a motion to amend to indefinitely postpone?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion was made and seconded. Discussion on indefinitely postponing Article twenty-one. Seeing none. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. All right, Article twenty-two, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All right, this is a petition article, Article twen-, Article twenty-two. Is he going to move it?
Good evening, I'm Virginia Schartenberg, Citizen Petitioner. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any action relating thereto." And if I may make some comments?
Not yet.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have, we have a second. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this art, of Article twenty-two by a vote of four to two.
Okay, now you can make comments.
Article twenty-two, the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban would prohibit the retail sale of single-use plastic water bottles. Why is plastic such a concern? Spearheaded by Sustainable Practices Limited, over the past two years, residents across the Cape have focused on the life cycle impact of plastic on the environment. The discussion and policy has broadened from recycling to the actual impacts of plastic on our soils, in our waters, and on human health. Today, all fifteen Cape towns have a municipal plastic bottle ban in place, eliminating town government purchase of single-use plastic bottled beverages. This means that tax dollars cannot be used to purchase a product that is known to have adverse consequences across its life cycle. The commercial ban follows this campaign. Since the fall of two thousand and twenty, ten Cape towns have voted to pass the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban at their respective town meeting. The ban eliminates the sale of non-flavored, non-carbonated, single-use plastic waters, bottles of less than a gallon in size. In eliminating this product, the commercial ban highlights that plastic water bottles are sixty percent of the beverage market, are virtually unregulated compared to municipal water, and have negative consequences from production to consumption to disposal. The majority of plastic is petroleum-based, leaving a significant greenhouse gas footprint. Think about this. It takes three liters of water and two hundred and fifty milliliters of oil to make just one liter of bottled water. Human health can be severely affected throughout this process. Both petroleum and plant-based plastics contain synthetic estrogen, which leaches through plastic products with the potential to affect a person's hormonal balance. The chemicals in plastic are also known to leach into beverages and food, and are connected to obesity, endocrine disruption, fertility issues, autoimmune disease, ADHD, and cardiovascular disease. We have lived without plastic and without having a bottle within reach much longer than the approximately forty years plastic bottles have been around. It's time to rethink our connection with convenience. The resources used in production are far greater than the benefit gained, and with plastic, the true cost far exceeds the price. We all pay with our health. I and the Mashpee Environmental Coalition are asking you to vote yes on the commercial single-use plastic water bottle ban, Article twenty-two. We can make a difference, be an example for other communities, and steward our portion of the earth.
Any, yes, sir? Wendy's won't like this, all right.
Hi, my name is Wayne again. It's actually more the manufacturer's issue also, okay? I have served, I'm a coffee roaster that I lost my business to COVID. I used to sell products. Anything I had was compostable. The straws were made out of corn. The plastic cups were made out of corn. I could serve out of them. My paper cups weren't lined with plastic. They were paper with whatever, but they were all compostable. Peak difference, okay? That's where we need to go. Not ban everything. Go compostable. Then we can throw it away, and if people see it on the roadside, it'll break down eventually. Think about all your masks that you see on the roadside, guys. Your face mask, okay? Are those compostable? Think about that, and then I'm going to leave on that one in your brain.
Any other discussion on, oh, okay, go ahead. Yes, ma'am, back there.
Hi, my name is Laurie Amberman, I'm a gunk would have, and I just want to know the difference between having a soda in a bottle versus having water in a bottle. Can someone answer that, please? Because my idea would be to put five cents on a wad bottle.
Uh, all right, let's go, let's go back over there, yep?
My name is Singer, and I live on Cranberry Avenue, and I feel that if people are throwing plastic bottles away, they'll throw glass bottles away, somebody can get hurt, they can cut themselves, they get a flat tire, and also, I don't know if people buy cases of bottled water in, in, in plastic, but to try and have a person carry a six-pack or a twelve-pack or a carton of water in a glass container, they won't be able to do it, and that's unfair to an elderly population. Thank you.
I've been told this, a person in the audience who is a non-resident, so they have to get permission to speak. All those in favor of allowing a non-voting member, I should say, to speak, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes of it. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Martha Yevangatasev, and I am the founder and executive director of Sustainable Practices. We have members across the Cape that have been filing this petition. There was a question a moment ago, why we did not go after soda. The simple reason is there's a huge learning curve when it comes to just the basic task of eliminating plastic. With at least single-use plastic water bottles, we get people to be cognizant of the fact of municipal water, which is basically what is in your single-use plastic water bottle. So you are just paying more for somebody else's municipal water that is unregulated to drink, and on top of it, it is not tested, so you don't even know what's in it. When you go to your water department, you know what's in your water. The best thing you can do is be more vigilant about protecting your community water source. Number one, we all have grown up in this room. Unfortunately, I think the age in this room will say that we've all lived without plastic water bottles, and there are things that we have created in this country, I'm an economist, that are specifically related to speed to market and making a profit. How hard is it to take out PFOS-related products on the market? It's because we have to be litigious in order to take it off, and when we do, another product comes back on. Teflon was taken off the market only to have another PFOS chemical base come back on. It is time to start thinking beyond your convenience, because our convenience is killing us, number one, and number two, even if you don't care for yourself, care for those that come after you, care for those that live in this room with you, we don't have to wait until the most adverse circumstances occur before we take an effort to make a change. Please be the change, Town Number Eleven, tonight. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir, the one in the, Winter Park or down there. Not right there, straight ahead, sorry.
Dwight Feinstein Angelos Way again, thirty-five-year resident of Mashpee, not from a special interest group, not from a left-wing or right-wing environmental group, no special hidden agenda, not a non-resident who was maybe encouraged to come and speak, because she goes from area to area trying to convince people, not sure, but I can tell you this, I can tell you this, one of the problems I have with this, and I'm all for the environment, one of the problems I have with this is on the exemption side, sales or distribution of non-carbonated, unflavored drinking water in a single-use bottle during an emergency. That sounds like a good idea, right? We have an emergency. There's something wrong with the drinking water, right? That's what's happened right now in Mattapoiset. They had a problem out there, and they're on a boiled water, water. So what's going to happen here in Mashpee is we, if you pass this, and we have a problem with the drinking water, it's okay now to get bottled water, so where are you going to get it? You're going to go to Stop &amp; Shop, right? No. Stop &amp; Shop will not have an incentive to, to carry this. We'll go to Roach Brothers, no. What about small retailers? What about the impact of the small retailers in this town that have already taken a beating? This is going to have a direct impact on them, and when the town says we have a water emergency, and they say, let's get bottled water, is the town then going to buy boiled water and single-use in bulk? Are you going to provide that? Is that part of this, or is everyone going to be on a bottled, boiled water order? So I think there's some downstream effects and some things, I think it's well-intentioned. I think, who doesn't want clean water? Who, who doesn't want a clean environment? We all do, but I think there's going to be downstream effects that may not have been thought of, certainly to the business community that's struggling, and certainly during an emergency where we ramble around to get those, quote, "single-use" or bottles of water that are not being sold by the retailers because you banned them. Thank you.
Just a couple more, right behind, right behind you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go, you go ahead, and then I'll call her next.
Thank you. Pat Flynn, Forest Drive. It struck me as funny when I read this, and I've been watching it as this action has progressed across the Cape, is that we're talking about water, you know? We're talking about water. We're talking about the one thing we should drink, and yet, we're going to try to ban single-use water bottles, but I can buy all the powerade I want, I can buy all the energy drinks I want. I go to Starbucks or Dunkin's or K-Cott Coffee and buy all kinds of cold drinks, also in plastic cups, but yet, we're targeting water. Now, I think it's odd that, that we, we target the one thing we really should drink, the one thing our doctors tell us we should be drinking, the one thing we all should probably drink more of. You know, I drink the water that comes out of my tub. I drink water that comes out of bottles too, depends on the day. People say, well, you know, use a refillable container. And I say, okay, where do I refill it? There's no infrastructure. Well, a restaurant will refill it for you. I really doubt that. A store will refill it for you. I know better. So we're, we're talking about, why, I think getting plastic out of the environment is absolutely, absolutely something we have to do, but I think that we in Mashpee do try, most of us here, most of the people I know in this room, we try real hard to recycle everything we can, every little piece of paper, every little piece of plastic, everything we can. We work hard and recycle it. You know, if, if we banned plastic water bottles, I could hear the DPW Director coming back in the air and saying, our recycling rates are down, and we're going to have to raise the fees at the transfer stations or some such, you know? So, so we keep doing this. I think, I think if, if there's a group that wants to do something in the environment, the group that wants to do something about plastic, single-use plastic, a group that wants to do those things, then let's amend the bottle bill in Massachusetts, put a deposit on it, and then we'll take care of it, like it does allegedly, like it does the soda bottles. I can buy, I can feed my kids all the Mountain Dew I want, but God forbid if I give a bottle of, of tap, of, of Aquafina water. Thank you.
It's this woman right here, yeah, go ahead, and then I'll go over here. Hold on.
Pamela McCarthy, fourteen Leamington Lane. I'm for this article. I think if I want water, I can go to any tap in my house, any tap, and I can get water from it. I can't get Coca-Cola from the taps in my house. That would make for a really gross shower, frankly, but with every change that we try to make, it's going to be uncomfortable. I would ask the residents of Mashpee to just try to make this change. Thank you.
Good. Ma'am.
My name's Wendy Williams. I'm seventy years old. I live on Simon's Narrows, and I've lived there half my life now. I don't know how that happened. It just kind of happened. I meant to move, but I haven't gotten around to it yet, and my birthday was this year, and I finally realized I'm in Mashpee for good, so I'm intending to make a change, and I think that everybody here should remember the last time they took a walk on the beach. It was beautiful, wasn't it? Except when you look down, and there was a plastic water bottle, and then you took a couple more steps, and there was another plastic water bottle, and then you took a couple more steps, and there was plastic everywhere on the beach. So that's annoying to us when we take a beautiful walk in the gorgeous natural setting that we enjoy here in Mashpee, but imagine how terrible it is for the animals that actually have to live in the ocean. What we all know now is that these water bottles break down into tiny little micro particles, and the animals are ingesting them, and they're dying from them. We know that out in the ocean now, there are huge rafts of plastic everywhere, and they're made up primarily of these plastic water bottles. They don't go away, and the important thing here is, we don't need them. So I'm an old person, officially an old person now, and I can tell you that when I was a kid, I could go into any restaurant or lunch counter and ask for a glass of water, and I got it. So our gentleman back here who said, will they fill it up for you? I don't think so. Well, guess what? In the old days, people would fill up and give you the, your canteens and give you water bottles. I can remember all the places I've traveled in the world, all over Africa, all over Mongolia, everywhere in Europe, where else have I been? I don't even remember. Mexico. If you want a glass of water and you don't have it, a human being will hand you a glass of water, because that's what human beings do in this world. You shouldn't have to pay for it. You shouldn't have to pay for it. You should say, can I have a glass of water? And another human being says, here, let me help you. I can tell you, that happened to me in the Sahara Desert a lot. We don't need plastic water bottles, and it's very simple to say, no. If we do need water, if there is some kind of problem with water in Mashpee, we can always go to the store and get bottled water in the gallon jugs or larger. These things are disposed of easily, and they're all over our beaches, and we don't need them.
Hey. I, I thought we weren't supposed to drink the water in Mexico. All right, yes, ma'am.
Mary Ann Murphy, fifty-three Tracy Lane. I agree that reducing plastic waste and pollution is important to our environment, but I rise to urge you to vote against this article because I don't think it's the right way to solve this problem. Water is the healthiest drink. We should be encouraging people to drink it, not making it harder. So why are we focusing on water bottles in this article? Because eighty percent of deposit containers, like plastic soda bottles, are already being recycled under the state's bottle bill passed in nineteen eighty-two, compared to only twenty-three percent of non-deposit containers like water bottles. But there's a solution to that. There's currently a bill on Beacon Hill to revise the bottle bill to include deposits on water bottles, something that wasn't even envisioned, as people have said, forty years ago when the bottle bills first passed. So they're, they're aware that that's, there's been a change, and they're taking action to make a change to that. Adding a deposit to these bottles will increase the recycling rate, taking care of the goal of this article, which is to reduce plastic pollution, while allowing consumers to continue to have the safest of all beverages available to them when we need it. We need options. The Cape has a very vulnerable water system, as we know, and there have been multiple water pollution problems throughout the Cape, so it's important for us to have alternatives available. We don't have town water throughout the whole town. Many of us are on private wells, so again, having alternative water supplies are important. And although there is an, an exception in the case of emergency, as, as the gentleman before said, banning the sale of individual water bottles means it's going to take a lot longer to get emergency supplies of waters, water here and distributed if there is an emergency. Also, we're a tourist economy here on the Cape. Reducing the availability of convenient water bottles is not a smart move for supporting all the beachgoers, hikers, runners, and others who buy water from our convenience and grocery stores. Let's support the revised bottle bill statewide and increase the recycling of water bottles through a tried-and-true method that's through a tried-and-true method that's been working for almost 40 years. I urge you to vote against Article 22.
All right. I'm gonna move to question. How many people wanna talk? One, two, three. Three more people. Start with you, ma'am.
Oh. Hi, my name's Alana Doyle, 148 Sunset Strip. I just wanna say, I wanna echo, I agree that we need a deposit on plastic. I think that's a much more reasonable approach than just starting to ban products that are bad for the environment and bad for health. And I'm gonna say that because if we start banning things on the basis of being bad for the environment and bad for the health, we are setting a precedent to start banning almost everything. I personally have been a vegetarian for 15 years now, and the livestock industry, we talk about pollution a lot in Mashpee, especially nitrogen pollution. Imagine nine billion animals raised and slaughtered every year. How much nitrogen that contributes to the environment? Now, I'm not someone who would ever say someone needs to change their lifestyle to match the choices that I have made, which positively impact the environment. But starting something like this, by banning something like this, we are setting a precedent to ban things in the future that are unhealthy for us or unhealthy for the environment. And I know a lot of people are laughing right now because it's not something that they would personally change in their lifestyle. And you know what? It's not fair if you're sitting at home eating a steak telling us we can't have water bottles when you're not making environmentally conscious choices either. Thank you.
Okay. Back up there, there's two people up there, and I'm gonna call the question. Go ahead.
Shirendi Francesco, Situitt Road. I wonder if any of the dissenting members on the finance or the board would be willing to speak to why they voted against.
Well, they don't have to, but does anybody wanna speak from the finance committee? Yes, sir. I can't see from behind you, so.
Hi, Pat, 24 Strattan Ridge. I personally voted against it because there are all other types of flavored waters out there. Put a drop of lemon in it, and now you can sell it. You've got children. We have an obesity problem, but now let's give them sugared drinks because they don't even have water to buy. Again, it's been said by many people, very more eloquently than I can, is we are a tourist economy. What are they gonna do? Bring their own water bottles? You know, the real key here is stop polluting. That's the problem, is stop polluting. And one must ask, how many tickets have ever been written in Mashpee for someone that's littered? Okay? So, you know, that's the problem. The problem here is you're talking about litter, but you're going after it the wrong way, and not stop telling people how to live their lives, especially with a healthy water.
All right. All right, the last one back there. Yes, sir.
This is Laurie Amberman.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Laurie Amberman. Laurie Amberman. And I am against it because of the obesity problem. So now you're gonna tell children when they want something, they can't have a healthy water? Walking the beach, jumping on somebody that said the beach is filled with water bottles? It's filled with soda bottles too. I just walked it and collected a whole bag. Went to the trash on Mashpee Beach. It said, "Please carry out your trash." But yet, there's a trash barrel there. I thought it was ironic, that said "trash" on it, and all the trash is blowing along the beach. So it's just not plastic water bottles. I ride a bike. I go to the vineyard. I run out of water that I keep in a recycle container. I can't walk into a restaurant and say, "Fill this." Imagine if all the tourists walked into restaurants and said, "Refill this." It's crazy. Water is a healthy drink. You need to be able to buy it. And I support also the five cents on redemption of it. Thank you.
All right. I did, I thought you were the last speaker. Go ahead, sir. You are the last speaker.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Gino Martesi. I live on Park Place Way. I'm trying to wrap my head around how 200 people in a tent in a football field can decide for thousands of what they can do and how they can live their lives. We're sitting in a cold tent when we have a perfectly warm building over there that we can sit in.
You're preaching to the choir right there.
And I still can't understand why they're out here doing this. But in any event, the 200 people that brave the cold here, that come here to voice their opinions, I really appreciate that. I'm against doing this for all the reasons stated before me, and especially to the little young lady out there that basically made a very elegant response. I will say the word for what you're talking about is called incrementalization. Thank you.
Okay. Glad I called on you guys. All right. We're done. All those in favor of Article 22, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed to Article 22?
Aye!
Okay.
Sounds like a tie to me.
Is that because you're cold? All right. All those in favor, you're gonna raise your cards. All those in favor, raise your cards, please. All right, all those opposed to Article 22, raise your cards.
You're losing this one, man.
I don't think so. You gotta look for my perspective.
I'm not getting involved in that one.
It's gonna be real close.
But you're gonna lose. You're gonna lose.
I'm good.
You're gonna lose, but you're really gonna win. You'll think you'll be happy later. I don't need your backlash.
Make a mistake.
Use a dish.
That's it, right? Last one?
It's gonna be so close.
We started with the wrong one and ended with...
No, no, no. No, I'm recording it. Don't say any score.
Oh, you don't wanna fight?
I think it's so close.
Come on.
Call.
I know. How could it be?
Those calculators.
I don't know.
Call it that close?
Come on. The dramas kill them.
I think it's been hacked by the Russians.
Two fifty, right? Two fifty.
The article passes 104 to 102.
Wow! That is...
That was close.
Wow!
104.
104. 102. Okay, Article 23. See if the town will vote to amend Article 7, Land Space Requirement, Section 174-31, Land Space Requirement Table by adding footnote 25 to maximum lot of lot coverage percent. Footnote 25 would read as follows. "Structures erected solely for the purpose of roof-mounted solar energy systems is permitted. Parking lots/areas shall not contribute to the parcel lots' coverage maximum, but shall comply with all setback criteria of the applicable zoning district. For medium and large-scale solar energy systems requiring a special permit from the planning board pursuant to Section 40, Solar Energy Systems Overlay District, the planning board may, at its sole discretion, approve in its decision a solar energy system whose lot coverage exceeds 20% in consideration of site-specific consideration, uh, conditions." It's a petition article. Mr. Mills.
Robert Mills, Emma Oakley Mills Way. I also represent the petitioning parties. I move, Mr. Moderator, to indefinitely postpone Article 23.
Second.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee wanna weigh in on this?
Finance Committee would recommend approval of the motion to indefinitely postpone.
And does the planning board have comments?
After holding a public hearing on October 6, 2021, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approve Article 23.
So before everyone is, a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 23, any comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 23, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Indefinitely postponed. Article 24, they take away a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
A motion seconded. All favor? All right, this is a petition article. Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Mills, Emma Oakley Mills Way. I represent the petitioning party. I move to indefinitely postpone Article 24.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee approve of the indefinitely postponing?
Finance Committee recommends indefinite postponement.
Planning Board.
After holding a public hearing on October 6, 2021, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend town meeting approve Article 24.
Okay, any discussion on Article, indefinitely postponing Article 24? Seeing none. All those in favor indefinitely postponing Article 24, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
Second.
All right, indefinitely postponed. My understanding that the petitioner is going to move Articles 25 through 28 to also be indefinitely postponed. Is that correct? Mr. Mills.
That's right, Mr. Moderator.
All right. And do I have a second? I'd like to do this as a group.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee, do you have a problem with...
Finance Committee is fine with indefinitely postponing.
All right. I don't think there's any planning board on this one. All right.
Actually, there was planning board. Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Be my guest.
After holding a public hearing on October 6, 2021, the planning board was unable to make a definitive recommendation on Articles 25, 26, 27, or 28. Upon a motion to recommend approval, the board was split two to two.
Okay. Thus, we are indefinitely postponing. Okay, any discussion on any of the... Yes.
Richard Jusorga, 65, Shields Road. Can I just ask Mr. Mills why they are postponing?
Yeah, well, it had to do with what the planning board did, and it's more procedural. Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll try to explain it as best I can. I was just informed this evening that there may be a legal technicality related to... The planning board voted two to two on Articles 25 through 28, so that there's no recommendation coming from the planning board. And I'm advised that as a matter of a technicality, it cannot come to town meeting because of that. And so that is why we are moving to indefinitely postpone. I think the whole notion of solar energy needs to be fully vetted, or more fully vetted, I should say, with some of the town fathers. And we will be back.
And mothers.
And town mothers.
Come on, Rob, get with it.
Select women as well.
I had to say that, Rob. Sorry.
That's okay. So we will be back, but that's the reason why we are moving to indefinitely postpone.
All right. Any further discussion of indefinitely postponing?
Did we just know why it's only two to two? Where's the extra planning board member on this?
He was on vacation.
Vacation.
Then.
George Vellon, I remember the planning board. I unfortunately was unable to attend that meeting on October 6. Had I been there, I would have voted for these articles.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 25 through 28, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Okay, hold everything. I have a motion by Mr. Brady.
I'd like to entertain a motion for reconsideration, for a re-vote on Article 22. That's the plastic.
Mr. Moderator.
Hey, hold on.
Point of order. I believe under your rules, only someone who voted in favor of an article or the side that won can move reconsideration, and I believe Mr. Brady did not. So I contend that that article, that motion to reconsider is out of order.
Well, I have gone by that, and then I've changed my opinion over the last 20-some-odd town meetings. According to the town council, it's not in bylaw, so I'm gonna entertain that.
That's what you told me in the spring when we were doing wastewater.
People left significantly.
All right, so there's a motion to reconsider and a second. Hold on. You're just gonna vote to reconsider or not? Then we can discuss it again. So...
That's the whole point.
So, all those in favor of reconsidering, I need a two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Gonna make me take the calculator out. All right, all those in favor of reconsidering, raise your cards. It's gotta be two-thirds.
Oh, my gosh. It's gonna be two-thirds for a recount. But it's ridiculous. It's not gonna happen.
I've done that every time.
I asked you in the spring what the rules were, and you told me you had to be on the winning side.
That's Robert rules.
Never worked that. That's what you told me. I got it right.
Robert rules is the same. You have to, the prevailing side.
It was 12. It was 19 the first time. That's from this, from this table here. It said 19 the first time. She said 12 this time. Who backed up?
You guys count the same people? All right, all those in favor of not reconsidering, raise your cards.
I just said, yeah.
She got us.
That's the number two.
Are you looking for it?
Yeah.
Is it there?
Town meeting time here.
Does it do that?
That's in the chart?
This is a rough town meeting.
To bring it reconsidered?
Yeah. I don't think there's enough.
I think reconsideration is a jury.
No.
To have a recount?
They should have had a recount because that's to make a decision in two votes.
Does he need your count?
I have said.
Need your count?
At all.